May I have a motion that we only discuss those four matters for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one. Discussion and consideration of personnel matter. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A five. Discussion on prospective business where no previous announcement had been made. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to a contractual matter. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash two seven one one A eleven. Discussion or consideration of honorary degree or special awards.
Sir.
Sir.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Yes.
All right, um, are there any modifications into the public session agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'd like to welcome the guests and visitors tonight to a full house. This is something we haven't had for a while. And I was online since I took over too. So I would like to welcome all of you and the ones online also. If you all would look at May fourth, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes. Um, look over them and somebody would make a motion to accept them.
I move. Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to the presentation to Chief Gary W. Roach upon his retirement. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen. A resolution recognizing the service and career of Chief Gary W. Roach upon his retirement from the Pilaski Police Department. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desires to commend and recognize those retiring employees who have given of their time, talents, and abilities in a career of service to their community and its citizens. And whereas Chief Gary W. Roach began his career with the Harrison Burke Police Department in nineteen seventy-six, moving to the Roanoke County Sheriff's Office in nineteen seventy-eight as a deputy sheriff. And in his career with that organization, held every major position until his appointment as commanding officer of the Special Operations Division. And whereas in two thousand one, Chief Roach was hired as a chief of police for the Pilaski Police Department, where he instilled in the department a high degree of preparedness and professionalism, culminating in the department, receiving full accreditation from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Committee. And whereas during his career, Chief Roach has amassed a staggering amount of academic and professional honors, including bachelor's and master's degree in the administration of justice from VCU and Radford University. A commend- a commendation from the Roanoke County Chief of Police for his performance at the FBI Academy and a first place award in Virginia Law Enforcement Chiefs Challenge in two thousand one. And whereas Chief Roach also involved himself in community and volunteer activities, serving as chairman for multiple police chiefs associations, participating in community organizations such as the Pilaski Community Partners Coalition and the Governor's Mental Health Working Group. And whereas Chief Gary W. Roach, after a remarkable forty-five-year career in law enforcement, which included twenty years as chief of police for the Pilaski Police Department, will officially retire on June first, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does hereby extend its highest commendation and thanks to Chief Gary W. Roach for his service to the town of Pilaski Police Department and for his lifelong service and commitment to the preservation of the peace, safety, and life of all citizens. Be it further resolved that the Town Council and the employees of the town of Pilaski wish Chief Roach well in his retirement and salute him for an incredible career. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will be hereby adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. And may I have a, um...
Mr. Mayor, um, I move that, uh, we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen. A resolution recognizing the service and career of Chief Gary W. Roach upon his retirement from the Pilaski Police Department.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
For your service.
And it's good to see all these teenagers here who we do not know.
Congratulations on your success.
All right, now we'll move on to the presentations honoring Pilaski County High School athletic teams. So the first one will be... Wait, where's that one? It said seventeen, okay, this one? All right. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. A resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougar varsity-based basketball team for their outstanding season, sorry. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desires to acknowledge and commend the students of Pilaski County High School for their achievements and honors. And whereas the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougar varsity basketball team compiled an outstanding record of twelve wins and one loss, winning the Class Four Regional D Championship for the second straight year and making their second appearance in the VHSL Class Four A State Championship Game for the second time out of the past three seasons, overcoming the difficulties and adversities caused by the current conditions nationwide. And whereas the outstanding efforts of this group of exceptionally talented and determined young women continue the proud tradition of Cougar Athletics in their display of ability, teamwork, dedication, and spirit. And whereas the achievements of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougar varsity basketball team is a source of great pride for our community and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does hereby extend its sincere gratitude and congratulations to each member of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougars varsity basketball team for their outstanding season and for representing our community in the finest tradition of Cougar Athletics. Be it further resolved that the Town Council commends Coach Scott Ratcliffe and his staff for giving of their time and talent in serving and mentoring the students at Pilaski County High School. This res- resolution is effective upon adoption and will be hereby adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. May I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. Resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty one Lady Cougar varsity basketball team for their outstanding season.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And can we have the young ladies and their coach come to be with the mayor for a picture and the presentation, please?
That's not so easy to say, is it?
I want those ladies with you too, lots of girls. We want this to be a party picture.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. All right. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. A resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty one Cougar Indoor Track and Field for their exceptional season. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desires to recognize and honor the students of Pilaski County High School for their accomplishments and awards. And whereas the twenty twenty-one Cougar Indoor Track and Field Team finished its season with its highest rating in the school's history, finishing second in the state in the Class Four A State Indoor Track and Field Competition. And whereas this achievement demonstrates the dedication and hard work of each member of the team through long hours of practice and personal sacrifice in giving their best effort on behalf of their school, their teammates, and their community despite the uncertainties and challenges of recent circumstances. And whereas the achievement of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Cougar Indoor Track and Field Team has become a source of great pride for our community and its citizens and our student athletics and their achievements. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting this regular set- setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does hereby extend its sincerest congratulations and appreciation to each member of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Cougar Indoor Track and Field Team for their truly outstanding season and for their dedication in representing our community in the finest tradition of Cougar Athletics. Be it further resolved that the Town Council extends its sincerest thanks to the coaching staff for giving their time and talent in guiding and supporting the students at Pilaski County High School. This resolution is effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded votes of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. A resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Cougar Indoor Track and Field Team for their exceptional season.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And may I have the team?
Team and coach.
Come on up.
Thank you all. All right, moving on to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty. A resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougars for their outstanding performance at the State Indoor Track and Field Competition. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desires to recognize and applaud the students of Pilaski County High School who have distinguished themselves by their performance in representing the school and our community. And whereas during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one track season, four Lady Cougars qualified to participate in the Class Four A State Indoor Track and Field Competition, where they distinguished themselves by finishing sixth in the state out of twenty-eight other schools participating in the competitions. And whereas the athletic skill, determination, and dedication of Keasley Arnold, Allison Castle, Claire Dunahan, and Madison Woolwine embodies the finest tradition of Cougar Athletics in representing themselves, their school, and their community on the field of athletic competition. And whereas despite the uncertainties and difficulties in the current times, the achievements of these four young women are the demonstration of their personal commitment to excellence in their sport, which is a source of great pride to our community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does hereby extend its sincerest thanks and congratulations to Kessley Arnold, Allison Castle, Claire Dunagan, and Madison Woolwine in their superb performance in the Class Four A State Indoor Track and Field Competition. Be it further resolved that the Town Council thanks the coaches and staff for their dedication and hard work to bring out the best in our athletes and students of Pilaski County High School who are truly the pride of Pilaski County. This resolution is effective upon adoption and is hereby adopt- or will be adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski as follows. May I have a motion?
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty. A resolution honoring the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Lady Cougars Indoor Track and Field Team for their exceptional season.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please, sir?
Sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
You may have the coach and the students, please. Thank you all, thank you so much.
Need any water?
No. All right, moving on to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. A resolution recognizing the public, the, see, I might need that water. A resolution recognizing the Pilaski County Cougars cross-country team and their success during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season. Whereas the Town Council and the citizens of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desire to commend and congratulate the student athletes of Pilaski County High School for their successes and achievements in representing our community and upholding the highest standards of Cougar Athletics. And whereas Pilaski County High School has in its athletic history built many superb athletes in cross-country competitions. And whereas the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Pilaski County Cross Country Team has added to that proud tradition by winning the Class Four Regional D Cross Country Meet. And whereas due to the dedication and commitment and excellence, six members of the team earned all regional honors for their outstanding performance and competitive effort. And five of these individuals advanced further to qualify for the State Cross Country Meet. Whereas cross-country competition requirement requires a person with a special dedication to put in their long hours of training and conditioning necessary not only to reach their limit but to surpass it and reach their highest level of performance, competition, and athleticism. And whereas the members of the Pilaski County Cross Country Team, through their achievements this season, have demonstrated this special dedication along with their passion, excellence, and dedication in upholding the true spirit of Cougar Athletics through their personal commitment and preservations to excel and compete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Council does hereby express its deepest appreciation and gratitude to the members of the Pilaski County Cross Country Team for their superb season and personal dedication to their school, their community, and their sport. Be it further resolved that the Town Council and the community extends their thanks to the coaches and staff for their willingness to train, support, and mentor the students of Pilaski County High School. This resolution is effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion, please, for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. A resolution recognizing the Pilaski County Cougar Cross Country Team for their success during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now may I have the coaches and the team before us, please? Thank you. All right, now let's move on to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution recognizing the Pilaski County High School Wrestling Team for their appearance at the State Wrestling Tournament. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia desires to recognize and commend the student athletes of Pilaski County High School for their willingness to represent their school, their community, and themselves in competition in the finest tradition of Cougar Athletics. And whereas wrestling is a demanding sport requiring conditioning, endless hours of training and practice, and the mental discipline to focus completely during the conduct of a match. And whereas the Pilaski County High School Wrestling Team, as a reflection of their dedication, ability, and high level of skill, sent ten wrestlers to the state tournament in Virginia Beach, which was one of the largest delegations of Cougar wrestlers to compete in that event in many years. And whereas the Town Council believes the hard work and dedication of each individual member of the wrestling team who qualified to compete with the best wrestlers in the Commonwealth as representatives of Pilaski County High School is worthy of recognition and commendations for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does extend its sincere gratitude and thanks to the Pilaski County High School Wrestling Team for their recent competition of the State Wrestling Tournament. Be it further resolved that the Town Council expresses its thanks and support for the coaches and staff who give of themselves in service of the students of Pilaski County High School. This resolution is effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, before I make a motion, I just want to say one thing. Wrestling is very special to me. My son was an All-State Wrestler who won a lot of medals in New Jersey, North Carolina, and gave it up to go in the military during the war and who is now works in the CIA. So wrestlers are athletes of their own. They can blame losing on no one but theirself. But they are really great athletes. Not taking away from anything else, but I would like to say that, like to make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution recognizing Pilaski County High School Wrestling Team for their appearance at the State Wrestling Tournament. Congratulations.
And I need a second, please.
Sit down.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, may I have the students and the coaches, please? Thank you all so much. We'll move to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. A resolution congratulating the Pilaski County High School Competition Cheer Team for their outstanding performance in regional and state competition. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia wishes to commend the students of Pilaski County High School for their participation in various competitions and activities in the life of the school. And whereas the student body and supporters of Pilaski County High School have long been known for their vocal and enthusiastic support for the school and its athletic teams. And whereas the Pilaski County High School Competition Cheer Team has distinguished itself over the past two years by winning two consecutive Regional Four D Championships in cheering competition. And whereas this year, the Pilaski County Competition Cheer Team not only won their third consecutive Regional Four D Cheering Competition, but placed fourth in the state meeting, the state meet, continuing the tradition of excellence in representing their school and their community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one, that the Town Council does hereby congratulate and heartfully thank the Pilaski County High School Competition Cheer Team for its superb record of achievement and its dedication in winning its third consecutive Regional Four D Championship. Be it further resolved that the Town Council extends its deepest thanks to the coaches and staff for giving of themselves and their time in service to the pride of our community, the students of Pilaski County High School. This resolution is effective upon adoption and is, will be hereby adopted this eighteenth day of May two thousand twenty-one by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of the town of Pilaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. A resolution congratulating the Pilaski County High School Competition Cheer Team for their outstanding performance in regional and state competition.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now may I have the students and the coaches, please? This one might take a little while.
Thank you all again. We appreciate y'all coming out.
Absolutely. Congratulations to y'all.
As long as I don't have to read.
How about just retirement? Have one of those ready?
Bill, as long as I don't have to read a lot like that. I did not like to read in school.
Good job.
I am learning.
Looks like pretty exceptional young people there.
Mr. County Attorney, you can come back in now.
Oh, he's waiting there?
It's actually working. It's probably billable hour.
He was probably in the hall a lot in school. Like just reliving his parents.
Oh, that was a timeout please?
Yeah, that was a timeout. Let's move on to the continued discussion on the skate park.
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we do provide in your agenda packets some information that was inevitably provided perhaps a year or so ago to you all with the conceptual design for a skate park on First Street that we are presently in the process of doing remediation on. That remediation is being paid for through what's called a V-Bath Grant. And Mr. Pego can kind of fill you in on why it's taken as long as it has for us to get to this point. But we also now that that remediation seems to be going on, have what we think might be some opportunities for you all to consider development of the park there. And we also want to share with you, as I think you will see in some pictures that we provided in your packets over the weekend, some of the current conditions at the skate park that is located at McGill that cause us concern from a liability standpoint. So I think bringing all of this together for discussion this evening is a good next step and depending on how the Council wants to proceed, we would then sit down with those individuals who have an interest in the skate park at either or both locations to kind of talk about next steps. So with that as kind of an introduction, I'll let Bill fill in all of the blanks.
Okay. Is it okay if I sit? We finally got started on the general chemical site, I'll call it. Ran into some hurdles, roadblocks, did not get a lot of interest from contractors who want to do the demo. We were able to secure a contractor and sell upon a price, so we are moving forward. Of course, when that building was raised, it was in bad shape. But it left brick rubble and concrete footer's foundation, the remnants of those. So those all have to be jackhammered out, removed. About a foot of that soil will need to be removed and then we'll have to go to the landfill because it does contain some material that's not real good. So they're in the process of doing that. When we get it back, or when they get done with it, then we should have a pad that we can build on that will be kept, so to speak. If you have got this little conceptual drawing here, you can see a depiction of a layout. We're kind of going with this a little bit, but it could change. This is not cast in stone, but it does provide a skate park area. It does provide a basketball area, court, and then a small pavilion bathroom. I think that the town manager and I have discussed it a lot and obviously we can't afford to build the Cadillac version, but if we could maybe get some things done, skate park, maybe the basketball court, maybe the town could put in their capital improvements plan to build some of these other amenities to it.
You forgot, and most important.
What's that?
That your basketball court could...
And I know you're excited about this. She wants to take up pickleball, okay? So in the money that we have with the V-Bath money, there's about $228,000 left that we need to spend to remediate the site. Our contract to demo is to not exceed price of $80,900. So that's going to leave us about $150,000, which we hope to apply to doing as much as we can. I think kind of the neat thing, and we have talked about the pickleball, but I think I founded a company, and if you look in some of these quotes here in the little packet I had David put in your seat.
You meant that one?
Yes, those are the little quotes. So there's two quotes, one is the low one and one is the medium one. So you're looking at about $10,000 and about $20,000. I think for the $20,000 price tag, we could get quite a bit of equipment to outfit the skate park, and that would just sit on our pad once we get it done, formed. I would suggest that maybe you call back in the skate people and have to get their input on what things to put there. You know, they talk about quarter pipes, grind rails, all this kind of stuff. I'm not a skater, I never did, so I don't know what that is, but get their input and put that to buying some appearances to put on our pad.
I think it might help the folks who do the skating to get a sense of, I mean, is your view that the drawing, maybe it's not exactly what's going to go there, but roughly approximate size wise? Because I think, I mean, some of this is just, you know, you, there's not a ton of space there. So I mean, there's a certain, at a certain point you need space to do, you know, to move around. So I don't know how compact that is compared to, say, the McGill, you know, that kind of stuff. Is there, could you maybe give us a little bit of insight on to that?
Well, this drawing is the scale.
Okay.
You know, for the proposed skate park area, you have about 6200 square feet.
Okay. And about, what would your estimate be of the lot at McGill right now?
The lot at McGill, you know, the original court they were using, it's probably a little bit bigger than that.
The one, the one, not the double?
Not the double.
Okay. So just that single one where they...
But I think as they expanded into the other one, of course, that increased by two.
Okay. So the, so the single one there, it would be a little bit bigger than that 6200 square feet?
Well, the 6200 square feet would be bigger.
Oh, that would be bigger?
You could take the basketball court and visually set it on there and that's...
Okay, oh, okay, I see. So the basketball court...
Tennis court, basketball court.
Okay. Pickleball.
Yeah.
Multi-use court.
So, you know, the basketball court, if we could get the slab court again, there are companies that have a surface that will lay on that and they can be marked out for multiple sports, basketball. You can have a tennis net that comes down, you can have a pickleball net. You can actually put two pickleball courts because they will go...
Where's that be on the drawing?
Sideways. Well, if you look at the estimate for the skate park stuff... You can go beyond those, that... Next photo is a pickleball court.
And so what you're saying is that most portions of the pickleball court would allow two to be on that same full-size basketball court?
You can have it striped off that way.
Okay.
If you go to the next sheet, there's a, and it's very hard to read, it didn't copy well. But on this particular website, in this company, you can see a court that you can do all those different sports on. You know, everything from shuffleboard to pickleball.
If you took, if you took this drawing here from downtown area which is right.
Right.
That would meet your needs there. They were with our Sixth Street tennis court. Fit in to this right here as a repaving for a pickleball court? Or you talking about using this, this too as that?
Well, we can make this a multi-use court. You know, you could make it part of the skate park. Expand it that big. We could make other tennis courts and pickleball court.
I was wondering if they'd do it like right here?
Well, you could do it right here, yes.
Yeah.
Can it make this...
I guess what I'm looking at is have, is like my problem is putting everything under one umbrella here and one spot, your fence, lights.
You could, yes.
If you was going to do it, if you was going to do it, that's, I wouldn't want to have one up there, one down here, one here, one here.
Yep.
I am curious to, you'd said there's potentially 150 or there will be 150,000 remaining. I know the original estimates we had were just ridiculous, whatever they were, a million plus.
Over $400,000 was the one bid that we got that we then had to work down from. So you're absolutely correct.
Okay, so... But that was, the $400,000 was for the remediation, right?
Right.
Okay. So we're down, we got down to 80?
We are down to not to exceed $81,000, yes.
And it looks like, I mean, I just drove by, and it looks like they've already taken out all the old concrete.
It is all gone, yeah.
So now they're just doing the soil remediation?
Yes.
So my question is, do you, do you have an idea? I know you don't have it, it's going to be a gut feel at this point, 150 remaining. How far does that take us?
I don't know, Greg. It is very tough right now to get a contractor to give you a price. They are having trouble getting materials, materials are skyrocketing and they are busy. I was supposed to be with a concrete contractor. He had a very large port a day, but he, and this is what he does, it's all really he does. He is going to see me before the end of the week. So I, once I get a price kind of firm from him of what he'll pour these slabs for, then I can take that off, see what else we have that we can spend for, you know, half pipes and all that type of stuff. And some fence and lighting, I think is what we would want to go for. And then the other stuff we could plan for in the future.
Right.
Maybe, you know, a sanitary sewer connection and maybe sometime we put a bathroom there, a pavilion. We don't have to do that right now.
How much is in the match from the funds that the group raised?
I have not seen an exact accounting, but it was something significantly less than $10,000. I don't have the exact number, we can get that for you and that is sitting in an account that we don't even have access to, you know, that they put together. And of course, I think the understanding was that the town would match whatever they would raise. You also have in, not this coming fiscal year's capital improvement, but we had slated funding at a million dollars of, which was the estimate that the consultants had given us on this original design in fiscal '23. Obviously, we could put less in for that and as Bill said, we could begin some development, you know, and then come back with some other items as we have funds available or maybe as, you know, grants might become available to do, you know, some small piece of it. But I think one of the issues that the Council needs to wrestle with is whether or not we should continue to make improvements on McGill if we have plans to do, you know, a better facility here off of First Street. And whether or not, you know, because those advocates for skating are doing some things at McGill that both Bill and I think have some liability associated with it, you know, how we're going to manage that. And so I think, again, depending on how the Council reacts to what we're suggesting, you know, we think a meeting with the, you know, representatives of that skateboard group were needed is necessary. We did send out to you all a couple of pictures on Friday's packet that showed how we have had that area cleared and we're in the process of getting what are now two dotted us lights. One was uncovered when we pulled out the brush and did fix it so that the police could go around the full court as they, you know, try to monitor what's going on there. But there may be some competing interest here that you all have to kind of figure out and where you want the resources put. But at a minimum, I think we ought to be closing off McGill use after a certain time. You know, there is a gate there that hasn't been used, but I just think there's a significant liability, particularly as we've seen what they've already done in terms of tearing back fence, leaving some areas where poles, they pulled out poles, have area exposed and Bill can explain what's wrong with it. But there are lots of things that we think create some challenges even for the experienced skateboarder once they get going. So we're either going to have to spend some money fixing that up or we're going to have to limit that use, even as you all may talk about, you know, doing something at First Street.
And I did find that good when we pitched. Mr. Pons, granted this was created in 2017, it looks like they raised about $1,100. So that amount may have changed since then.
One question is can, if we, maybe, even if we can't afford to buy, depending on how expensive concrete is, could we relocate some of those? Some of that equipment from McGill downtown?
Certainly could, yes. We could take our trailer up there and if we got a pad port, you know, once it went set for 30 days, reached its compressive strength, we could...
We could move it down.
We could put stuff on there and they could start skating there.
Okay.
And that couldn't do until we purchase more.
We just need to remove it or fade it from some of the items.
We did, we could paint that.
Paint those out.
You know, and then at that point, then I would say probably the basketball court area needs to be demolished. You know, I think it's gotten to where it's a safety issue.
The surface or the...
The surface and everything, yes.
Okay.
Where they've taken a couple of poles down, it's left a divot. They've tried to beat the pole back in, but you know, if you caught that with a skateboard wheel, I would think it would really send you for a trip, but...
What, and again, I realize this is all speculative somewhat. What's our, what timeframe are we thinking?
Because I think you said last time that the remediation was going to be running through July, is that right?
I hope that we will be done here in the next week, weather permitting.
Yeah, because I mean, they've been, I work nearby, so I've heard them jackhammering, you know, every day, so...
I'm pretty sure, so they... I think it's progressed quickly, I hope that that will continue. We have to be done with this by...
September then or we lose the money. And so our goal is to finish the remediation as soon as possible. Hopefully find someone who's willing to be available to pour concrete and use the balance of what we have in the grant before that September deadline and put it into preparing that site. And then with whatever we can do, whether it's moving some of the apparatus from McGill or looking for other funding sources or what have you, then gradually develop that site.
I think that timeframe then would lend itself, well, it certainly drives our decision on how soon we start pulling out of McGill Village. But it doesn't sound like to me, with that timeframe, we're talking three months. Um, but it doesn't sound like to me, if, and with that timeframe, we're talking three months, maybe. Um, that it makes a lot of sense to put a lot of money into McGill. Uh, I think we should obviously make it as safe as possible while we're still, while it's still there.
Right.
But I don't think we should invest a lot of money in it, I mean.
But we have not pulled out that center fence that they asked for when they were here with you all, um, after last meeting. So we've not gone to that, um, time and expense because we wanted you all to see what we saw, you know, as we went out there. And I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to actually, uh, visit, um, that area.
I went out several months ago and it looked like, I mean, this is after the first conversation we had on it. And that, it looked like somebody had tried to paint, much paint the, you know, the equipment and stuff like that, tried to spruce it up, um, a bit. But I, I did notice that the fence was in poor shape and, I mean, it seems like if, if we're not gonna be generating something new, people are gonna keep using that whether we tell them to or not. And I think we might just need to, you know, do, if we're gonna go up there and do something, we might as well, you know, do as much as necessary and make it as safe as we can. Um, I mean, just eliminate the, you know, the, the glaring, you know, pole sticking up kind of things. And if we need to cut it, you know, we do that. Um, that's my, that's my opinion.
What would you, what would you think about locking it at night now, there's still access from McGill Village? Cause we also uncovered a path that I think Bill said was actually paved that goes up to, is it Olivia?
Olivia Street.
Yeah, Olivia Street. So there, and I'm not sure that those people that are using it necessarily are coming to the skate park. They're just using it as an easy access to the downtown, um, as opposed to, you know, walking around. But there, you know, evidently there were gates there and still are, I don't know what condition they're in, so that the park was not open, you know, twenty-four seven. And certainly the.
No, I, I think if we wanna, if we, if there's gates to lock, it seems like that's a reasonable thing to do at, at dusk. Essentially, if it's not late at night.
Well, we are in the process, I think, of getting those dawn to dusk lights installed, but that would facilitate any police patrols, you know, that would need to be done, you know, in the area. And certainly the clearing of the brush, you know, was a request of the police in terms of how, when they do go there, they often, uh, aren't, I shouldn't say often. They experience runners, you know, who go into that wooded area and maybe even use that path that, that Bill found. So that's why we tried to make it easier for them to do their jobs, you know, as they're in that area.
So, I think we don't spend as much up there right now, is what it sounds like. I mean, we do it for the sake and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just, you know, address safety. If, if, if it seems like we're on the path to getting a new skate park or at least some new, whether it's, whether it's just a new pad with the old equipment or new, new equipment and new, you know, however much we can do. Sounds like that's the, that's the path forward.
And you all are comfortable with us proceeding with trying to use whatever money is left after the remediation to at least try to get, um, a surface there that then can be used to put a basketball court on, a skate park, whatever.
Saying whatever, yeah. Um, can we use that money to pay our own employees for like overtime or anything like that? I was just thinking, you know, pouring concrete, I don't know, pouring concrete like this is within the skill set of our public works employees, but.
That, that would be a large pour.
Yeah, I, I always thought that was a little bit beyond maybe what they're, they're skilled on, I believe.
Well, and as, uh, I may have mentioned to you all, we, we're suffering with a staff shortage anyway and, and, um, public works. So it would be challenging for us to get it done and particularly to get it done within this deadline. Of course, it may also be challenging to find a contractor to come in and do that as well. I mean, they have to pay premium, you know, to make that happen. We just don't know yet.
But if, if we're gonna lose the money anyways, it seems like better to use it than lose it.
Oh, yes, well, that's our goal. And let me tell you, having worked with these federal programs before, they don't want any money back.
Right.
They will tell you when you get close, you know, spend it on something. They're just not equipped to get return funds and then have to deal with that.
They're certainly equipped in spending it, so.
Do you have to do that for me?
Do what?
Are we going on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we now go to the council comments section of this. So, Mr. Kim, you have.
Oh, don't even think, thank you.
Mr. Kim.
Well, you know I do.
Do I even?
Last, yeah, last month, I, I spoke about the weeds and the grass in the town that wasn't getting cut, wasn't getting mowed. And our illustrious town mayor gave us the, uh, ordinance and she is correct, she is one hundred percent correct. When you read on her. If you read, this is what we need to take a look at and change the wording. I've got some pictures, uh, just this evening. I want to put up here right quick, uh, if I was coming into town and I see this stuff right, I'd probably turn around and leave too. We get some of these pictures up and show. Now, the town, ever since I've been up here, has mowed these areas. They have mowed since, since this is written, twenty-fourteen is when this was put out, but we've always mowed that and weeded around these poles. This is, this is one of your, your, in your main, on some of your main drives right here, coming into town, right here. Uh, it's right here at the red light, uh, just back up here, classic furniture, flip through some of them, uh, right here. This is on our side, sidewalk, grass is up over the side. Well, this, this is what I'm talking about. We, we've gotta get, thi- this right here is in front of a major business. It's, I have to say, it's in front of Mr. Alex down here and his pole's not growing up right here. If he pays taxes, he buys a business permit, he buys stickers for his vehicles, just like a business. But in front of his business is this. Now, it's not of anybody's fault because this is what was accepted twenty-fourteen. And she is exactly right. If you read, this is unacceptable to me. It should be unacceptable for everybody setting up here. This is to our bike trail, right here. This is to our bike trail right here. We should keep all this mowed and weeded in here. Keep it all mowed and weeded in here. Right here on the corners, this is our, our corner grass right here. Where is our weeders? Where is our mowers? From twenty-fourteen up to this, to this point, we mowed all this and it looked good. Our procedure, our, our, uh, policy, which written, she's correct. We're not supposed to do it. You're not, right here, right here is one of the old Jefferson School. Anything from the sidewalk over with poles, fire hydrants, it is our property. It's tainted. So if you don't think it ain't, put you a political sign right there and watch it get gone. Or park you a car right there and watch it get towed. But we're telling that we don't need to mow that because of this policy that we accepted. She's exactly right. Those are just a few pictures, you know, I, I, I don't understand everything at this right here. So what I wanted to bring up, in, in the next meeting or so, we really need to take a wording and change this wording. This is terrible. Shannon has a business, the mayor has a business, just above you, I got a call from, uh, Ix the other day, wanting to know why, why is nobody? You know, well, our policy says we're not supposed to do it. Why all of a sudden we're not supposed to do it? Well, she's correct. It is. So all I wanna talk about is just, I'll, I'll leave alone, with by next meeting, cause it's gonna be twice as high. If we can at least get this taken to the grass at ninety-nine alongside, get, get this cut and weeded around these poles that are on our property and let's spruce this place up a little bit. This, and then we'll take care of the wording.
Greg, but, uh, several of the pictures that you shared and Bill was here, I think, to attest to it, are clearly the town's responsibility. We need to be doing a better job around those tolls, um, and the tree beds. So, with your pictures, you're absolutely right. And I would just tell you that again, we are very shorthanded, you know. So we are doing the best that we can and we're not even mowing town-owned properties irrespective of this issue as frequently, uh, as we should. Uh, we have a piece of property that we put on the market now for the, Housing Authority, uh, that we're trying to sell and the grass, you know, has grown up there. We demolished a building and now the grass is tall and Bill's sending his people out, you know, to cut that if they haven't already today or yesterday. And if you drive through town, there are some people who aren't complying. Maybe they never even knew about the ordinance, but they're still concerned about the appearance in front of their business or property. If it's a vacant piece of property, uh, such as the Jefferson School, your code enforcement officer will send that, uh, owner a notice. And after the required ten days of notice, we will in fact cut and build the owner for that money. Whether that be the entire property itself or just that strip, you know, that you've talked about. Um, but where we have an active, uh, owner, that expectation is out there. And I think the material that we provided you also, uh, includes, um, the press release that we did that did appear in the newspaper as well as some information that we put on the town's Facebook page. So we tried to remind people, um, of this ordinance. And I just want to point those items out, certainly if the council wants to change the ordinance, that's your, I'd be glad to say that.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but put a couple of the pictures away. My only, my only thing, it's silly, it is silly. If we're here, we're weeding, we're mowing and we have this strip between the sidewalk, right there is a prime example. And we own that pole, we own that property. And see, you're correct, I'm not arguing, you're right. I'm, I'm standing with you on this.
Yeah, no, I know, that's the way it's gone in other.
But we need to reword this. We have people to mow, we need, it wouldn't take us no time. They, they've done it up to this year, they've done it this year, they mowed all that. They always have mowed all that. It ta- it doesn't take any more time to ride by, truck does drop it, mow, mow. It's just the way I look at it. Anything on that side sidewalk, I agree one hundred percent, mow it, build it. I just think this, the, the ordinance are, if it's on this side sidewalk and there's a phone pole and there's a meter in there, that is our property. I don't care how you add it up.
No, it's, it's supposed to ride away, you're, you're absolutely right.
We can, and that's our fault. Uh, and, and I want, I want shorthand it. And they, I sent you a guy there a couple, couple of months ago. And y'all made him go back to his driver's license. If y'all have, have you hired him? Don't know, I'm not, I'm not putting him on the spot. I was, I wondered.
Phil can find out for you. I know Kim had interviewed.
So, so when I, when I thought, when I, I thought about this issue, Jamie actually brought it to my attention and, and, uh, I had noticed it too. But when I thought about it, I was, the thing, you know, after thinking about it, I went, you know, for the first time, where I actually operating closely to what our actual ordinances are.
Yes, sir, you are.
And that's a good place to be, right? So the fact that these things are shaken out and however this one ends up shaken out is a good thing. Because that means we're tightening up our policy, right? So obviously this has been in effect, the very same policy that Ms. Bertram read. And, uh, said, oh, well, we, you know, according to policy, we don't do that, right? This is the very same policy that's been in effect since twenty-fourteen. So we were obviously not even reading our policy. And I think that's, uh, I think it's been like that for many years prior to, to your coming in and really looking at what we're doing. So I appreciate the fact we're having this discussion. I certainly see what Mr. Ractoff is saying. Um, that picture, if I'm not mistaken, that land is owned by Honeywell.
And that lot was actually mowed not too long ago. I think it's been, been mowed twice this year. So their equipment was there, it would have taken really no time at all, but he probably has never done that before. So whoever the mowing company is, um, that contracts that out probably just didn't do it because he's never done it.
Right. And that makes perfect sense. And I feel like that's probably the case all over town.
Yes.
And, and those people will, I think, once they see it there and somebody goes, whoever's paying them will say, why are you leaving that? Cause they don't know who mows. I mean, you know, if you're a property owner, somebody else mows it, you don't know who, it's the town or a contractor or somebody who mows it.
Right, well, they're still in violation of the ordinance.
Right. But you just don't, you don't, but you don't know if it's cut, you don't know who cuts it. So, I mean, part of this is, I mean, it's unsightly, I agree. But at the same time, you know, the only way we, you know, get ourselves back to some fiscal health is not to be, cause I mean, I know that strip won't take that much time to mow, but forty of those strips is a whole day. It's dropping mowers and, and going out there. I mean, just driving back and forth to all those places. I mean, do we wanna be spending that much money every week, I mean, you know, when this is not our, when it shouldn't be our responsibility? I mean, and you.
I know, I don't agree with what you're saying, but we have mowed up to this year.
Right, and we don't have a reserve fund.
You have been mowing and I'll be the first one to admit to you all that I identified this issue last fall. When I saw our people out mowing those, and I know what the, this ordinance looks like in every other community that I've ever been in. And so I went to the code and sure enough, you had the same policy. Although you let grass grow to fourteen inches, every other place, the height is much lower than that. And I instructed Bill, you know, that when the next mowing season came, came around, we were in fact not to mow those areas because it's somebody else's responsibility. And it's why we put out the press release and it's why we put it on Facebook. And as I said, some people, I don't know if they saw the press release or if they read it on Facebook, but they are mowing those areas. And then others are not. And we're gonna have to, and in fact, I talked to Carla Hodge, our code enforcement person today. And she's in the process of sending out letters, not only about this space, but other things that are not being mowed. And this is, this is grass season. Um, so it's a problem for us. Uh, but again, as I said to you all last time, it's your policy. This is not one that you can blame on your town manager. It's been here for a while. But I do believe in trying to maximize the use of our resources. And this is not a good use of our resources, particularly if they're limited, but if the change, if the policy's changed.
It's not also not a good, it's not a good resource. You would sit here and say that, but it's also crappy looking. If I was a business guy, I don't care what anybody says, coming in here, the first thing you see is grass up to your knees and I'm gonna, I'd come around and leave too. I'd be honest with you. That is your property or our property. I don't care what they say. The town owns that. And if you don't think so, put a sign on it.
No, you're absolutely right.
You'll find out who owns it real well.
Nobody would question that.
Yeah, and, but I guess one of my arguments I'm gonna shut about is we've been mowing ever since I've been up here. We've been mowing it. And I don't know about this little piece, but the rest of it, we mow. In front of United Muffer, we mow all of them on this side. So we have done this up in. This is not anybody's fault. It's policy, she's right.
Well, I would encourage you, if you change the ordinance to reduce the height of the grass.
We need to go mow it.
So, I, and, you know, I see both sides and, and, and I, I could really come down on either side of this, this discussion. But I, I do think i- if we continue on the path we're going, cause I, I agree it's a nice order. If we continue on the path we're going, I think it's about, when you do something for somebody, one of your kids or whatever, and I don't mean, I'm not trying to do it. I'm just, from my experience, if, you know, if I do something for them, they never learn to do it themselves, or they just get used to it, right? And so that becomes what they do until you, you, you say, well, here's what, here's how it's supposed to be, right? And, and, and I'm not trying to be demeaning in any way, I'm just saying that we haven't communicated necessarily, um, what our expectations are as well as we could have. Quite frankly, I don't read the newspaper. So, um, I, I don't know if other people are like that. I read, I read online stuff some. But as far as going and grabbing a newspaper and reading, reading the, the advertisements, I, it just doesn't happen very often. Um, that, and I may be different than a lot of people. But, uh, so, so I'm not sure that's the best way to get the word out. I- if we wanna get the word out, is can we do something with the water bill or?
Certainly could.
Um, I, I think that puts it, you know, every property owner, like Jamie said, there's a meter there, you know, they get a water bill, so.
Oh, except for the vacant properties and, you know, it's not those things that happen. And I would just also mention that as an aside, we are in the process of preparing some signage that we will start putting in yards when some, when that property is under code enforcement. So that the neighbors know that we are trying to deal with the situation. Unfortunately, it takes a long time for us to get into court, which is the, you know, the last point that we have in that process. But I do think posting and letting people know where we are aware of a problem and we are, where we're trying to address it can be a positive thing, even though the grass may be tall. even though the grass may be tall on that property, or there may be outdoor storage, you know, that we have to address.
And I, I do know, and so, so there are, there are a number of areas in town, if you take Sixth Street, for instance, you have the median on Sixth Street. Um, you know, that was just kind of hit, you know, I lived right off Sixth Street for a while, it was kind of hit and miss as to who mowed it, because I, I don't know, he's really responsible, I assume the town, in that case, because it's, it's not, it's, it's a road on both sides.
Right.
Um, but, but it's, I, I think, I certainly believe that if people realize that, you know, I think most people are going to mow that strip anyways, I think it's the properties that aren't near in, in front of a house are probably the bigger problem. But I think a water bill, at least, that starts to get the word out, and then we, at least it narrows down the issues of, you know, the, the problem areas. But it does look bad, I, I agree we need a resolution, but it, it's either we ride it out as we get the word out, or we, we take it back on ourselves, and again, I said, I could come down on both sides of that issue. I realize it's a financial burden.
Well, I, I guess the only thing left is, is we, can I get Mr. Peddick to come back to some kind of, or you come back to some kind of wording? We can read it, we either like it or we don't like it.
Well, if you want the town to assume responsibility for that strip, you would just eliminate the language, uh, in the ordinance that specifies that that strip is the responsibility of the property owner. But as I said, I would encourage you to also think about, if you're going to change the ordinance, that you reduce the height of the grass because we can't cite someone until it gets to be that twelve inches, then we have to allow ten days, once the notice is put out, and this is true of grass that's, you know, in the yard, just as much as that strip. And so, with good weather and sunshine and a little bit of water, um, twelve inches becomes pretty high by the time that we can then either cut, if it's vacant property, or cite the person to go to court. So, I think reducing that height would be helpful irrespective of the, the parts of the property, you know, that you're concerned about, Mr. Hackler, because we have, you know, that same grass growing on many, um, if not abandoned, unoccupied, you know, properties here in town. But we can look at, um, giving you something to, um, consider, uh, and if you're agreeable to the idea of reducing the height, I'll make sure that we look at that as well in terms of what other communities are using as that.
If you, if you would like that, I'll make a motion, we sus- suspend, suspend the ordinance thirty-eight days, one twenty-one, two point, two point nine.
How did, how did you?
I made a motion, we sus- suspend the ordinance.
A second. All right, well then, I guess, can I get a roll call on that to see?
Can I, can I just say that, um,
Like, if you suspend that.
Make sure that it doesn't affect, uh, the twelve inches for the rest of the property. Because I know your.
Yeah, it, it, that would, that would suspend all grass cutting.
Language is. Saying, I think it's better to, to say that you want to remove, including the area adjoining such property extending to the curb line or paid portion of the roadway, because otherwise you are suspending.
All code enforcement.
All code enforcement, all grass regardless of where it's located.
I think if you look at this picture too, it may be an opportunity, we've been trying to get a hold of Honeywell. If we can get that into code enforcement, that may give us a chance to get a hold of Honeywell.
Actually, we have gotten a hold of them.
Okay.
Um, and we have them looking at the possibility of donating some property to the town, but the Honeywell property also potentially has, um, some environmental issues that we're going to have to have evaluated before we take on whatever that liability might be, but, um, Brady has been very successful in finding someone and finally answered his uh, many contacts, and that's been only recent, but yes, we are making some movement.
Well, that's, that's excellent news.
That is excellent.
Back to the motion.
Yes, I have a motion in a second.
What I would suggest there is, in this ordinance, it says people are supposed to do that, and that there's a lag with the enforcement. You're asking for it to be mowed. I don't know that you need to make any motions of anything other than just say you would prefer to have the town crews clean that up, if that's what you're talking about in the meantime. If, if your intention is in the meantime, mow it and clean it up because it looks like such a mess, then I know you're suspending that small component of the ordinance, but what you're really saying is, if, by stopping the ordinance, you're, you would be saying, hey, the, the person isn't responsible for it, we'd like for them to be responsible for it, you're not changing that. What you're doing is overriding it and going and cleaning it.
All, all I'm asking is, that's.
So now, I'm just saying as an action, I don't think you need to do anything with the ordinance.
So we could just.
Tell her to have it mowed.
Right.
That's what, that's essentially what we're talking about.
Buy me a lot more lawn or a lot of.
There you go. Like, the upside of that is, I mean, and, and back to my, it, it gives us a time to really adequately notify people and, and just say, hey, we're, 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 this ordinance says we're not going to do this after, you know, we shouldn't be doing it now, but we are, we'd like to stop, and, and just give people time to, to find that out, to figure that out. Because, you know, if they're never, if they've never mowed it before, they're not going to start like right away, noticing this is there.
Well, and if they do mow it, maybe that's not the responsibility of the person mowing it, but you're, if you're doing it on an unoccupied property, perhaps either, either the staff or caller could, uh, post something on there saying, hey, this, this time it was a, if it's not done under the code enforcement branch because you're doing it sooner, hey, this, we're doing this as a courtesy in this case, note, please note that ordinance and in the future, you know, you may be billed for something. It's just ways to do it without having.
Yeah, right, and I don't think, I don't, I, I think we should allow a lot of certain amount of time to, to get everybody under another job.
With, with the, with your own motion.
So then, do you want to ask for it to happen?
Well, you've got a motion, a second, so he's got.
I guess a second to withdraw, Jamie.
You need to withdraw.
If you would like to, just, I guess, I, I haven't done that in a long time. You, you got to make that, that's, that's the ultimate.
I'll withdraw, I'll say, okay. So we can use that, pull that.
We're in the weeds.
So can someone move those ones?
Right.
You're like a lo- a lost ball in the weeds, right? Okay, all right, so with that. All right, after that fun little. Mr. Ponce, do you have a question to read?
I do have one quick thing, I noticed that the ARP, um, funding guidance, the interim final rule from Treasury came out, and, um, I do, uh, did have a chance to look through a little bit of it, and it does look like, maybe we can, a lot of that, it's going to, for us, I think, what I can divine is stuff about water. So, um, I'm, I am hoping that when we hear back from Draper, or was it Draper who was going to come out, the I on I quote?
No, it was somebody else.
Somebody else, well, whomever it was, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I do think that that will be a, of money very well spent. Um, regardless of whether we use ARP or our own bunch of, whoever, you know, however that shakes out, that's just, you know, I think that's a, a big use of.
That study is on our list, uh, but I'm still waiting, I have two Zoomer conference calls this week uh, to get additional information coming through about the use of money, the document that I have read a couple times, I think I shouldn't have read it because I'm getting more confused, but it's a second time.
It is, it is, it is complex.
The owner gets fifty-one pages of guidance, um, and the real issue for us is that we are what's called a nonentitlement community, therefore, um, our guidelines and our money will come thirty days later in the larger communities, and the larger communities still have not, or at least some of them have not received, um, official funding. I've talked to my daughter, who's a city manager in a large community in Virginia, they've heard nothing, even though they have submitted all of the necessary paperwork. So, it's going to be.
Well, I'm just, I'm just hoping that, that that seems close enough to what we, we need, that we can hopefully, you know, because I think, I have a feeling that it's going to be a lot of communities that are going to be asking for that, so, like with the contractor issue that Bill was talking about, the sooner we get on people's sort of, on their, you know, on their calendar, the better off, because it's going, I think for engineers and stuff, it's going to be a busy couple of years, um, and contractors and stuff, so hopefully.
And that's why the funding is available until, uh, or the commitment to funding is till, um, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, and they actually have given a couple of years beyond that to actually finish projects because they understand that pipeline issue.
So, so that could potentially impact the program.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I would think that we could probably, it, from what I read, and assuming that the guidance is similar, we could use that money to pay for all of our, you know, big improvements that we have on the pip- pipeline for our water and sewer. Um, they all seem like they would be within what I read, which is great news for us. Those are our, those are going to be some of our biggest issues.
Yes.
And then you can retire, Bill. I will be well for your honor. Just replace that silver line behind my house, that's ceramic.
He has three projects that he told me he cannot retire until they're finished. And I'll be gone before they're completed, so you got to hold on a while.
Thank you, that was it.
I would just like to thank you and probably Bill and the crew that, um, did clean out the drain on Eighth Street. And just wondering, is there, do we have people that go in and check those every so often because that one? I mean, I know that that's probably the first time it's been cleaned out for a while, I mean, it looks so much better, I'm sure that it'll suck water down a lot better now.
Yeah, we, we do, Mayor, we, we, particularly before a heavy rain event, they try to use the back truck and clean as much as they can, obviously I can't get them all, but they try to get the major ones, we'll keep an eye on that one now.
I'm sure that that one may be, so, yeah, it was, yeah, thank you.
And for those of you who don't go to Facebook or, um, some of the other social media, uh, we did put, um, information out today as it relates to this slow leak, uh, that has been going on for a while.
And I appreciate that, because I got, I have gotten more than one comment about it, so I do appreciate.
Well, and that is on our list as well, for that American Recovery Act money, uh, it's an expensive proposition, and it, uh, will impact, um, our residents because we'll have to need to retract it and do other things to close that road and make it happen. Um, but we've tried to explain, um, exactly what the circumstances are, and that it's not a major water leak, we've been aware of it, but the solution is, you know, we definitely have to replace that valve that opposed to doing any repairs. And I understand some people commented that we've done repairs, I guess, in the past, but, um, our system goes back to what date, Bill?
Um, really nineteen hundred.
Somebody even asked that as a question, as a follow-up to the Facebook posting, well, how old is the system?
That valve's been used three times, right, because that's, that's it out.
Correct.
Yes, and so that's why it doesn't work. Well, then, we'll move on to the management's report, Mr. Ponce.
I really don't have anything to comment on, I have already commented too much on the grass and other things. We'll just mention that, um, the town's budget, uh, has been finally balanced, uh, and you should receive shortly before the end of the week, um, the manager's recommended budget, it will be advertised, uh, this week, and your public hearing will be June the first, with adoption scheduled for, uh, the fifteenth of June. And no surprises because of discussions we've had, not only the general fund budget that you will see presented, but the water and sewer budgets, uh, as well as the capital improvement plan for both the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. So, that's all I've been working on.
And we do appreciate that, I, I, I know that you've been jumped through a number of hoops, you and your, and, and your department managers, and I know it's not been a small task, especially with some of the things that, that you were able to kind of flush out that needed extra attention. So, certainly appreciate it, and going into this budget, I think I have, certainly have a very high level of confidence of, of, of what we, what we have, uh, and where we're headed, and what we're spending, and what we're not, so I, I thank you and your team for that very much.
All right, and with that, it's just a reminder of future council meetings, um, June first, twenty twenty-one, council meeting, closed session begins at five thirty, public session starts at seven, and then June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, council work session, closed session at five, public session at six thirty. And they have a motion for adjournment.
Seven.
Twenty-seven.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.